So I don't need, this is a Sims Township special meeting. It's a work session scheduled for January 18th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. There is no old business, so we're going to go ahead and move into the new business, park vendor policy. Okay. We talked about this briefly last year, about doing like a policy that would extend to all our special events, so that we're consistent with every event, with every vendor, with every special group, with every voluntary organization that wants to have or sell or be involved in any of our special events. So I took a stab at putting a policy together. So basically, it kind of outlines the application process, the certifications and permits that you have to go through, the fees, selling spaces, the storage in the park and the items provided by the township. So I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at that, or if they had questions, concerns, changes.
I had a chance to look at it.
Throw it in the trash?
No, I think, I mean, 99% of it, I'm good with, and the 1% is just a little word smithing, just a few tweaks here and there.
Okay.
I think it's very clear, and it sets the expectations and levels the playing field. One question, I don't know if this is the right tool or not, but as far as, so this would incorporate, let's say hypothetically, if we have a cross-country tournament, or match, or meet, sorry, and somebody in a food truck comes in, then they would have to abide by the vendor policy, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
The same one. What about the use of the water park by an entity? Wouldn't, I mean, not necessarily a nonprofit, but say a for-profit entity. Would they be following this, or that doesn't really apply?
Yeah, I've got that covered under the park fees.
Okay.
I added a, like, we've had a lot of issues with daycares.
Yeah, just show up. How do we, how do you even police that?
Well, I don't know. That's going to be a good question. I mean, I think they should at least have to rent a shelter. That's just my personal thought. At least they'd rent a shelter and we'd be, you know, getting some kind of income. And it's all kind of right there anyway. So at least it would make them plan ahead, and so that we would know when they were coming.
So we would send out a letter to all area?
Yep, daycares.
Daycares.
And just let them know that if you want to use the splash pad for your, you know, daycare, day trip, because a lot of them put them on their websites that they're going to.
Right.
So I did that under the park fees.
And the park rules, I guess. That's all together, park fees and park rules. Okay, that makes sense.
But if you, if you don't like what I did there, I mean, we can always change this to reflect that.
No, I'm just glad it's covered. Yeah, that makes sense. Because it didn't seem like it really fit with the vendor policy.
So is this vendor policy for like, all buildings, or just the parks?
It would be any special event.
Any special event. Okay, so I'm going to just throw something now to you.
Okay.
With the Loveland Sustainability to Cincinnati Recycle and Hub. Have you heard of it, Phil? It's on the west, west end of Cincinnati. And what they do is they recycle everything that doesn't get picked up by Rumpkey. Okay? So in going with them, they want to bring something, like, once a month out here that you can drop off, you know, like, you have cans, there's six cans, and you have that piece of plastic that goes with the six clams.
Mm-hmm.
There's like tubs you throw things in, or the egg cartons, they recycle a ton of egg cartons, things like that. And so they're looking at trying to find a space, and I was thinking maybe here, that once a month, people could drop something, stuff off, doesn't have anything to do with us, but they would be in charge of it and responsible for it, but they needed a location. Would this cover be, would this be part of that?
No, I wasn't thinking about that kind of stuff. I was thinking about like Easter and Memorial Day and July 4th.
Vendors that show up, food vendors.
Yeah, Fall Fest.
Okay.
Yeah, like any kind of-
Not a nonprofit organization.
Well, if they chose to participate.
Sell stuff.
Yeah, if they want to sell stuff.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to see. All right.
So basically, the vendors would have to provide a certificate of insurance across the board, but if the vendor shows that they're a nonprofit, then their $25 fee would be waived.
Right.
Yeah. And then they're just setting, you know, we'll tell you where to put your thing, you set it up and take it down, we don't do that, we'll provide water, that's about it. You provide electricity, et cetera.
Okay, I like it.
Now, back to your thing, that's not the same group that's on Spring Grove Avenue, are they? When you say-
No, they're by, we have the Cincinnati Police Recruit Offices that west end.
Okay.
They have this big, old building, and it's called Cincinnati Recycle and Hub. So they're only open on Thursdays and Saturdays.
Mm-hmm.
And it's really cool what you can recycle. I can't believe the amount of stuff that they recycle. So they have like a section, like, that you can drop off old material, and an artist can come and shop, and see if they have material, or tile for your house, you know, they, like extra tile.
Yeah, got some of that.
Really?
Yeah, and you can go up, up on the second floor, and you can shop there, and it's all free, because they just want everything to be reused or repurposed.
Mm-hmm.
And then they have different companies that come in and get, like, they have a ton of people that like the eggshell boxes, because they plant things and, you know, they start their seeds and stuff, so they recycle those, like, the little plastic cans that go around the turtles' necks, they, they have a company that comes and gets those. They have, I mean, all the plastic that's not water bottle, the thighs, fours, they recycle there, and then they send out.
Yeah, sounds great.
So it's a really cool place, and if you ever want to get a tour, it's amazing what they do.
I'm thinking of, I think it's run by Hamilton County, it's off of Spring Grove Avenue, but, but it doesn't sound like, that's where you take more like hazardous waste.
Yeah, this is not, they'll do hazardous waste, which they, you have to pay, you have to pay them for it.
Okay. Oh, that sounds great.
Yeah.
Cool.
So what words do you want me to change, Phil?
I can give you this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I can go through it if you want. Okay, item one, application process, just change, well, I guess this for discussion, but do you want the township to be responsible to send out these applications, or we just say the township will have applications available?
Oh, that's fine.
That way, we don't accidentally leave anybody out. We'll just say, we have it. We can post on the website, or whatever. Under certificates and permits, item one, you mentioned, talking about the $2 million insurance, and the name, the town, and name the township and their employees as additional insured. Okay, so that's the township employees?
Yeah.
Not, not the nonprofit employees?
Right, it would be, you would name Sims Township and all its employees as additional insured.
Okay.
Maybe I should say that.
No, 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 I just didn't read it correctly the first time. Item two there, you talk about the last sentence, sell food, but we'd want to say food or beverages.
Okay.
And then under selling space, item seven, you mentioned vendors provide their own electric. Do we want to add ice? And I was trying to think any, I was going to say water, but then you actually said down below that we'll provide the water. That's it?
Okay.
Yeah, minor.
You guys have anything?
Delete.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Next.
Okay, next, we have zoning text amendments.
Okay, this is something we talked about briefly, too. Some leftover things, and then some new things that have come up. So I propose that we add some, let's see, under section 137.3, height and area requirements, that it be amended. This came up when we had the McCluskey Zone change, where our EE district requires a 20-foot buffer, but yet all our, all our existing properties are all at 10, just because everything's been around since the 80s. So I propose that we knock it from 20 to 10, since we continually give them that in their final development plan.
Mm-hmm.
And under shared parking, we talked about this before with Silver Spring House and some other places that we've had issues. Basically, it's going to, instead of allowing for shared parking on the retail side for the offices, or offices for retail, this would allow it to go both ways, instead of just one way. As long as, let's see, furthermore, up to 50% of parking spaces required for a restaurant may be provided and used jointly by offices and churches not normally open, used or operated during the same hours as the restaurant, provided that a written agreement thereto is properly executed and filed, to assure the retention of parking spaces for such purposes. So this would just allow the parking back and forth of restaurants in the office district, because most offices are closed by 5 o'clock, and the restaurants are, you know, open later than that. So there's really no reason why they couldn't be shared, right?
Mm-hmm.
Under outdoor lighting, this gets rid of the 15-foot requirement and goes to 24 feet, since we have a lot of lighting that's already at the 24 feet throughout the township.
And so that's consistent with McCluskey's light poles?
Yeah, we do have a couple that are 30, I think, but I think the county's code is 36, so we do have some 30s out there.
Okay.
So we can be at 24, we can be at 30, it just depends. I mean, the higher you go, the less light poles that are required.
Right.
So I'd rather look at less light poles, personally, but you can do whatever there. Under additional use height, area requirements, we really didn't have anywhere in the code that dealt with, I just thought it was odd that we allow uncovered porches to go all the way, all the way around the house, as long as it meets the side yard setback requirements. And I just think that's odd. I don't, so like, literally, you could build a house, and if your front yard, even though you have a 30-foot front yard requirement, you literally could take your front porch all the way up to five foot within the sidewalk. I just think that's odd. It really should be-
Was this in here because of older houses that were?
It could be.
Yeah.
It could be, but like, I just eliminated it, and just got rid of uncovered porches. And then I, and then I put it in the back, so that a deck, or that it would project into the rear yard, and then it has to meet the rear yard setback, or that it can't exceed the rear yard setback by more than 10 feet. So if the rear yard is a 30-foot setback requirement, you could at least go 10 feet into the setback, and you'd still at least have a 20-foot setback, which is consistent with a lot of codes. A lot of codes will let you go into that setback, you know, 10 or so feet.
Are you defining uncovered porches as unroofed?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, isn't uncovered porches the same as platforms? I mean, a platform is really uncovered.
Yeah, could be. Or how, shoot, I didn't remember my code with me.
A terrace. A terrace? What is a terrace?
A terrace is probably going to be more like one of those things where you kind of step it with, like, retaining, retaining block, you kind of make it, like, it steps down.
As we say, terraces, platforms, and ornamental features, which do not extend more than three feet above the floor level of the ground, first story, may project into required front or rear yard, but shall not be any closer to any side lot line than the side yard requirement. So we can go into the front yard.
Yeah, but it doesn't give a, it doesn't say what the setback is, it just says you can go into the front yard.
Right.
I just think that's kind of weird.
So-
[laughing]
So then the second sentence, an open, unenclosed, or screened porch, deck, or paved terrace may project into a front yard or rear yard for a distance not exceeding 10 feet.
So do we even need the first one? Okay, we just combined it, put it all in one? Or do we need the-
I don't know, there are two, yeah. One is 171.10, the other is 171.13. So in a nutshell, we're just trying to prevent someone from building wood deck all the way across their front yard.
Yeah, unless you just want to set a, say that it can't go into the front yard more than so many feet, like, maybe just do a 10-foot requirement, and then it- I just definitely think you need to have some kind of setback.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of it just being open, like that. It's just kind of a weird way to word it.
Yeah. Do we have any condition, like, existing conditions, like this, of this nature?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. I'm sure there probably are. Maybe we just set a setback then, that way it covers all them.
I'm okay with the setback.
I mean, if you want to do like 10 feet in the front, 10 feet in the rear, that way they're both covered.
So they could do a terrace up to 10 feet of the property lawn?
Like, 10 feet of the setback, so if you've got a 30-foot setback, they could literally go 10 feet into the setback.
Into that, okay.
Yeah.
Understand.
And so that would leave 20 feet for it, I guess.
The only thing it wouldn't is if you had like, you know, like, I could think of like examples in Loveland Park where a lot of the houses are like, right there, so that probably wouldn't work in that particular neighborhood.
The new house on Rich Road, there's a deck on it, and man, it backs up to that garage, it's like-
See, that's why we probably need some kind of setbacks that-
Yeah, it's, I'm like, man, you're just sitting out on that deck looking at that backyard.
Mm-hmm.
At that garage.
That might be, that might be the one permit that made me look at this.
Yeah.
Because I remember looking at a permit in Loveland Park going, how could they put that deck there? Brian said, well, there's no setback requirement. I'm like, well, we probably need one then.
So if we do this, and there's something in Loveland Park that comes up?
Yeah, they could always go to the BZA.
BZA.
Mm-hmm. And we can just noodle on it some more. We don't have to decide tonight.
Well, do these two conflict with each other? Or, like you said, the second one-
The second one's more the rear yard. Oh, it does say front yard.
Yeah.
An open, unenclosed, or screened porch, deck, or paved terrace may project into a front yard or rear yard, for just, oh, you know what, we probably don't, we could probably eliminate.
Or just take out the word paved, just terrace. I mean, it could be gravel, could be stepping stones.
Patio.
Right.
So we just get rid of the first one?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me star that. Maybe I'll have a conversation with Brian, I'm going to see him tomorrow night, and ask him why we have both. Like, what was the purpose?
Okay.
Of both.
Okay.
So, wall signs within EE and EE districts, did you change anything here?
Yeah, this, this one was to clarify. So section 321.4-1, wall signs, it really doesn't limit the number of wall signs you can have, but for some reason, we have always interpreted to only allow people to have one sign. So even though, and the perfect example is where Donato's is. They have a building that's like not set, it doesn't face, it faces both roads, it faces-
The parking lot and Montgomery.
Right. But you can see it from two different angles on Montgomery Road. So when the Donatos went in there, Brian would only let them have one sign, even though our code didn't say that it was limited to one sign, it, it just was not clear. And so when I brought it up, I'm like, well, why can't Donatos, because they contacted me, and I was like, well, there's nothing in our code that says they can have two, why can't they just have two signs, because they face two different ways? And, but they just can't exceed that .75 square feet of sign surface for each linear foot of building frontage, which they didn't. But I just want to make it clear when we're interpreting the code, that they can have one sign per, you know, building facade. So if they've got that building that faces the same roadway, but in two different directions, they should literally be able to put two signs on their building, in my opinion. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I just kind of think whatever we can do to help our business community, because what was happening was he put his sign on the Montgomery roadside as you were coming southbound, and people would, and there was a door there, well, it was not their entrance, it was the kitchen. So the problem was, people would pull in, and pull right there with the sign, and then walk right into the kitchen. So their entrance was actually around the side where most of the parking lot was, and he, so he ended up moving his one sign to that, so that people would enter right there and knock through the kitchen.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with that.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, all I changed it to is the maximum number of wall signs permitted shall be one per building facade. In the case of multiple tenants or multiple facades, one sign for each business is permitted, or if there are multiple buildings, facades for one business, one sign per facade is permitted that faces the roadway. So in a case like Donato's, that would help him, that he could put one on each facade. And then like, if you're a Longhorn, I mean, obviously, they've got three where they could get signs, so they can get one from southbound Field's Earl, one from northbound, or, I'm sorry, eastbound, westbound, and then as you're passing Longhorn.
Where the interest is, yeah.
So if you have multiple tenants, are they each putting their own individual sign?
Yeah, because they're doorways, and they're probably going to put them right over top of their doorways.
Mm-hmm.
So say, say like, use exactly the same building for Donato's, say Donato's was divided, and there was a door here and a door here, they each be able to put a sign above their place of establishment.
Okay.
And then maybe Donato's had another side, and then he'd be able to put another sign on that other side.
Okay.
Okay, and then the variable message centers, let's see, oh, we talked about increasing the percentage from 25 to 50% of the total sign for the variable message, and then the ground-mounted sign and the freestanding pole sign would be a maximum of 75 square feet, instead of the 35. So this would give, you know, like, businesses that have those pole signs, they could do a variable message that's, instead of 35 at the max, it would be 75 at the max.
And does this include, like, downtown, I've been noticing that they've been putting up those really big signs that are really cool, like, when, you probably know what I'm talking about, like, how they're, like, advertisements for the fun, you know what I mean? They're like huge signs on buildings.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Are they variable message signs, like, they change?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
But they're like high-tech, and they're beautiful. I was like, wow, I can't wait till someone in Sims Township puts something like that up. I mean, they're high, and they'll do like, I don't know, they'll do something artsy, and then they'll do something, and then something else, and it's like, really cool.
Well, we'll have to get a copy of Loveland's code to see.
Not downtown Loveland, downtown Cincinnati.
Oh.
Yeah, it's like the Kroger building.
Yeah, the Kroger building has the coolest one.
High-rise, has one facing on Central.
I'll take a picture of it.
Okay.
And I'll send it to you. So would that include something like this, is that something like this, Phil?
Well, this would be-
Now, this is a lot smaller.
Yeah, this would be ground, this is ground, ground-mounted signs and freestanding signs, so it wouldn't include wall signs, unless you guys wanted to allow them to put it on. That's a request, actually, from Union Savings Bank, because right now, we just allow people to do the ground-mounted variable sign, and we don't allow them to do the wall signs.
I know, I'd like to see what kind of wall signs they're interested in, because if they're putting up any wall signs like that's downtown, it would be really cool.
So if they wanted a wall sign, they go through BZA right now?
Or if it is a PUD district, then they would go to zoning commission, they just have to do like a final development, modified final development plan. But if it's straight zoning, then yeah, they would have to go to BZA.
I'd like to take a look at all. What else?
Okay. Are you interested in increasing the percentage in the EE?
I don't know, I don't know enough about it.
You mean more than what you're already doing?
Uh, 25 to 50%. I didn't know if that's too much, too little. There's no, we let them go bigger on the McCluskey signs. So since that would be the EE, which is all out, you know, along Field's Earl and along Montgomery Road, if that would be an okay location to do that in.
But still keeping it mounted on the ground.
Mm-hmm.
I know a lot of those tall signs on Field's Earl, I mean, you can see them from-
Oh, yeah, from the neighborhood behind.
Harbor Town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of those signs were there previously, so grandfathered in.
Yeah.
That's a good point. I mean, all our neighbors, the community's being affected by them.
Well, maybe we just keep them on the, the ground versus putting them in the air.
Mm-hmm.
That would solve that problem.
Right.
Or you only let them so high. You know what I mean?
Right, no more than 10 feet tall, and that way, the building would hide it.
Right. Okay. They're still going to see it when you're driving by.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of those signs, those tall signs, like the McDonald's sign, honestly, you don't really see that in time to take the exit. By the time you see it, you've just driven past it.
True.
So-
That's true.
I think it's more effective just having the, the businesses on the highway sign saying, this exit, you know, for these businesses.
That's true.
Okay.
All right, so we can noodle on that some more. Section 351, detached garage, storage structures, and other detached structures, we don't have a minimum or maximum for detached structures, and I know we had issues, I think there was a BZA case on Field's Earl where we had somebody that wanted to build, I think, multiple structures, but that wasn't the issue, it was more of the square footage, like, the coverage, like, no more than 30% or 50% of your backyard couldn't be covered. But I was wondering if you guys wanted to see, you know, we probably should have a limit, you know, if your parcel's less than one, then you get one structure, and if you have more than one acre, then you get two, or if you wanted to do something less than that, or more than that. Some of the lots are pretty small, and then they get maxed out, so you really can't put that many storage structures on them anyway.
Yeah.
I know not everybody uses, lots of people use their garage anymore, storage, and then they park their cars outside.
And then, so let's just say, you have a parcel less than an acre, so no more than one- So no more than one structure permitted. But how big would that one structure be?
That's where you wouldn't be able to exceed that 30% rule that we have.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I wonder, do we have a square footage requirement?
I think I might have to think about this one.
Okay. I'll put a sec, uh, thingy by it. Because I know a lot of places, like I know where we used to live in Liberty Township, they just had a max, um, square footage. Like you couldn't exceed a max, like it couldn't be more than 25% of your, of your total house. So whatever everything added up to in your house, say you have like a 3,000 square foot house, you could not have a structure or structures more than 25% of that.
And we have 30%, right? That's our 30%.
Well, it's 30% coverage. So of that backyard, no more than 30% can be covered, which probably limits the amount of square footage. But there's no limit to the number of structures. I don't know. I guess I'll have to think about it. Maybe I'll look at other people's zoning codes and see what they do. Yeah.
I mean, on the one hand, I guess the intent is to prevent 30 odd structures like just being in the backyard.
Right.
But on the other hand, if somebody says, well, you know, I can't park my RV in my driveway and I don't want to pay to store it, I could build it one of those nice garages in my back and put my RV in, but that'd have to be a pretty big structure. Yeah.
Or you might have somebody that has a greenhouse and then, you know, another structure to keep like their lawnmower in or something.
Yeah, or a chicken coop or, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I can look at other codes and see what everybody else does.
Okay.
Let's see, um, so going back to Union Savings Bank, how we talked about the, um, their attorney had emailed me, Stephen Hunt, and he had asked, I had sent him what we previously did for another section of our code when we added variable message signs. And they, they came back with, let's see. I told them that we would consider putting the wall mounted or ground mounted sign in the office district, but they want it to be wall mounted signs instead of the freestanding signs. Let's see.
It's really no big deal. It's attached. You know what I'm talking about. It's long and they just, you can't, can't even read it. I mean, you know what I mean? So, I mean...
It's up to you guys. I don't, I don't care either way.
Here's would be a nice place if they could put one of the ones, not a big one, but a smaller one like they have downtown. Like on the corner of their building.
I'm sorry, are we talking about a normal sign or a variable message sign?
This would be a variable message sign. So they want the ability to be able to do variable message signs on the wall, like wall mounted version instead of it to be in the ground mounted version.
So what they have now, you know what they have now? So here's the corner of the building.
Right.
You know what they have now, right?
That green, that green LED. Doesn't it move?
Yeah, goes that way, yeah.
And they told me they can't get parts for it anymore and it needs to be fixed. And so they don't really have a choice but to replace it. But they can only, if they do replace it, they have to replace it with exactly the same size that's already there because it's grandfathered. Well, they can't get the same size. It's bigger. Like the only thing they can get is bigger.
How much bigger? Are we talking?
It's not that much bigger, but...
We're talking two.
No. Yeah. But anyway, because it's bigger and it wouldn't fit the same footprint, then they would have to go to the BZA to get approval. And lately the BZA has been denying everything. So I told them their best bet would be to make a run at you guys to see if you would be willing to change the text in our zoning code for office districts. But like I said, I tried to keep it as the same as everything else, like the ground mounted, you know, instead of going on the wall sign. Because if we do it for the office district, we almost have to do it for everybody else. But then they came back with this the other day, saying that they want it on the wall.
What's the objection to being wall mounted?
What Phil referred to is if they're wall mounted, they're up high and the neighbors can see them from wherever they are.
But the one at US Bank is not high.
Yeah, and you can't, the neighbors can't see it because all the neighbors are behind that one, particular one.
Oh, you're talking about areas where it impacts lighting.
Right. But if you're like a McDonald's or an Arby's or White Castle, like all of those are high enough to where all the neighbors behind it could see it. You know, I'm saying their buildings are high enough to where they could, you could possibly, potentially see it.
So can't we just restrict how high it can be?
Well, can't?
Yes. They would have to be low, yeah. You'd have to keep it lower, I guess.
Yeah, like...
Saying it could be no more than 10 feet off the ground or something like that on the wall.
Like, yeah.
Well, can't you put an exclusion in there for signs that would face into a neighborhood? That they cannot be that high?
That's a good idea, too.
But the others can be? I mean, like I don't, that US Bank sign where it is up high on the wall doesn't impact anybody, any neighborhood. So why would there be any objection? Can't you just do an exclusion that they can't do it that way if it faces into a neighborhood? Would that solve the problem?
I don't know. I almost like Jody's idea better where it can't be like no taller than, you know, so far off the ground.
Yeah, but how does that work for like US Bank?
Well, that's how it is now.
Yeah, US Bank, it's like right on the corner, so it's not that very tall.
Going 10 feet, maybe 12.
It's a full story high, isn't it?
Oh, okay. So that's what, 12 to 16 feet tall? So depending on...
You're talking 10 feet. If it was 10 feet, you, you would, probably wouldn't see it. Or where are you going to set it?
Well, you could ask them how high their sign is.
Up against the building.
No, they want to put it on the building.
Yeah, I know. But it only makes sense to do that where it is now, to me.
Right, yeah.
You can't put it on the building lower where it covers the windows.
True.
So they want to replace this existing sign with a very similar sign?
But it's bigger, you said.
Yeah, it would be bigger. I don't think it's much bigger.
I was going to say.
It's not much bigger, but it's bigger than what they have now. And those signs are grandfathered in. They were never allowed to be put up when they put them up. I don't know if they snuck them in there or if it just, nobody caught it when they did it.
Why does anybody object to them? I don't find them offensive. Do you? Do you?
It's just in our zoning code.
Yeah, it's our zoning code is very restrictive on the sign part, on sign regulations.
I can see it where it impacts anything, but there, I don't see where it impacts anything.
No. But the problem is you can't just pick locations. You have to be consistent.
That's why I said if you did an exclusion that if it faces into a neighborhood, you can't do it. It's got to be only so high. Why wouldn't that cover your bases?
I'm trying to think how we'd word that.
Facing, is there like a, you can say a main street?
Yeah, that would be the way to do it. It could only be, you can only have one and it can only face the main, your main building facade or main building entrance or whatever.
But this is actually, doesn't it wrap the corner?
Yeah, I think so.
So it faces Montgomery and Kemper.
Yeah. They can't have everything. I mean, they can try to figure out one way to do it instead of both ways.
But they definitely want it on the building as opposed to the ground mounted option. I mean, if they're buying a new sign anyways.
I keep going back to those things because I'm obsessed with them. Here's your sign. Just do that. I'm sending you a picture tomorrow morning.
Okay.
There's two of them right by the courthouse. And then there's one on that apartment building right there. And they're like all bright and lit up and they're really cool. But it's downtown.
This could be something too where I check other people's codes to see what everybody else does. See how they regulate electronic message boards. Oh, this picture they sent me, there it is over there. One's over their ATM. Oh, here it is. Existing USB cabinet, 24 inches by 14 foot 6 inches. Proposed message center would be 28 feet long by 13 feet 1 inch. So it's a little less, it's a little, um, not as long, but it's taller.
Say, I'm sorry, say those dimensions again.
And the existing cabinet is 24 by 14 6.
24 tall, high.
So 2 feet by 14 feet 6 inches long. And then the proposed message center would be 28 inches by 13 feet 1 inch tall, or long.
13 feet 1 inch long.
Yep. So that one's over the ATM.
So it's almost a wash as far as the area?
Oh, same thing on the other side. There are other... Get that again, is it? I can come back and look at other codes and then give you guys some options.
Okay.
But you don't think BZA would allow them to make the swap?
Nope. They wouldn't let Harper's across the street do it.
What did Harper's do?
They wanted to change where Kroger's is. They wanted to change that sign right there and they wouldn't let Kroger's change it out.
Okay. For a same size sign?
They wouldn't even, no, I think Kroger's, Kroger's wanted to replace something. I'll have to look that one up, but they, they told them no. But they had to stay with the same, same size or whatever, something. I'll look that up. And then the last thing we'll have to think about for zoning is, um, what we want to do or what we think we want to do with, um, the VRBOs and the bed and breakfast and the Airbnbs.
Right.
So currently, what is before the BZA on February 7th, because we had to cancel the meeting on the, yeah, 3rd or 7th or whatever day it was, we had to cancel that because the applicant and the attorney got COVID. So we rescheduled it for February 7th. But basically, how Brian interpreted it was that VRBOs and Airbnbs are like a bed and breakfast. They're not exactly like a bed and breakfast, but they're like it. So currently a bed and breakfast is a conditional use in the residential districts. And it is a conditional use in the H Riverfront District. So I included a copy of like from our code, like exactly what would be required. So if you did a bed and breakfast, you would have to get a conditional use certificate. So you would have to, under F, that is the parking. And it says parking should not be permitted in the area defined as the front yard setback of the existing zoning district. So you would have to put all your parking either in the back or to the side of the house. Um, let's see, H, the vehicular use area shall be located and designed as to minimize impact on the neighborhood. Vehicular use area. I don't know if that's the drive-up area maybe? Under M, no exterior alterations of an existing structure shall be made that depart from the residential character of the building. All new structures shall be compatible in residential design with the surrounding neighborhood. However, any improvement required by code or necessitated by licensing requirements shall not be deemed incompatible. Under P2 signage, uh, one sign permitted at a maximum of 12 square feet and non-internally illuminated.
No sign.
Wait. Where is that?
This says one sign.
Wait. And this is from where?
This is our code now. This is how our code is written for bed and breakfast. So, and then S is all exterior lighting shall be directed away from the adjacent residential properties and not exceed one or .5 foot candles at the property line without letting a residential user district. And then X, meals shall be served only to guests or residents of this facility and not to the general public.
Okay, I disagree.
That's what our bed and breakfast says now.
Yeah, I disagree. We're talking about a bed and breakfast. It sounds like we need to maybe...
Separate them.
Think through some of what we have currently.
Okay.
Because I agree, I don't want a bunch of bed and breakfast signs either. That's unnecessary.
And I, I personally don't want any.
This is...
We can't write them out.
Well, and that's, that's where we probably need to take a stand because I did provide a, a court case from Giaga County where there, they took the stance that if it was not listed as a permitted use, that it's not permitted at all. So, and they actually won their court case.
I'm there. I'm with you.
They won in the 11th district. So it's not, it would not be unheard of for us to make that kind of conclusion if that's what we wanted to do.
Mm-hmm. But this whole Airbnb, I think we just need to rewrite our zoning to make rentals of residential. You have to have a, an agreement that is a minimum of one year rental agreement.
Yeah, or we can fight it and say none.
Yeah, Anderson Township regulates the short-term rentals. So they have in their code, short-term rental STR. Um, and then they have like all kinds of different, um, almost the same stuff I just read off.
I mean, we have two houses on my street that are long-term rental. And families move in, their kids go to the school. I mean, they become part of the neighborhood, part of the community. And honestly, you wouldn't know. In fact, one of them, I take that back, we only have one now. Because one of them, after they were renting for, gosh, I don't know, three or four years, they finally bought the house. So, um, the owner decided to sell it.
It's different than a bed and breakfast.
Right, but I'm talking about the Airbnb thing. I think we need to squash that.
I think we should squash bed and breakfast.
I didn't even know that was being talked about.
Brian brought it to our attention. I'm like, oh, okay.
Do we have any official bed and breakfast?
In Camp Dennison, didn't they try? Didn't we know what she was trying to make out of the two family, right?
Oh, yeah, that was that two family with the retail. They wanted to revamp it as the retail and the two family. BZA said no.
She was upset.
But yeah, I agree. A bed and breakfast is basically the same as, as Airbnb. But I don't think we have any official bed and breakfast because no one's...
We should take the stand, sorry.
If it's not permitted, we didn't write it, we didn't permit it, so it's not permitted.
Yep. Goodbye.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, just make a minimum one-year lease.
Okay. So we would have to write something in there for that?
Yeah.
Okay?
No, I'm sorry.
And then we need to police it?
Yes. And if we fail, then we have to come up with another plan.
What do you mean if we failed?
Like if we fail and... Like if we fail and, like, the court upheld it in District 11?
Yeah, Geogee County.
They upheld it in District 11. Well, if Hamilton County doesn't uphold what we do, if we get sued, then we come up.
But at least there's a court case that they could point to to say, it's already been decided in Geogee County. Sando Mari versus Auburn Township in Geogee County.
And then if we fail at that, then we have to come back with some really tight restrictions, like gear. There can't be one, six in one neighborhood, you know what I mean? Like a person can't come and buy house, 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 right? Like with, you know, the retirement houses that we have. We'll have to come back, but I think first we fight it.
Okay. Okay. Do you agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all I got on zoning. Okay, so next is cemetery fee increases. So, we are, um, not taking in enough money to cover the cost for the cemetery. So I was hoping that I might convince you guys to raise the fees.
When was the last time we raised the fees?
It was before I got here, so it might be.
Okay, so it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been. I wanna say it was like 2014, maybe 2015? So it's been quite a few years.
Do we need to increase these, like, cost of living increase every year?
Probably, we probably should do that. But here's a, here's a comparison. So this goes back to 2006. And it shows like the sale of lots, our burials and the total revenue. And it shows like our total expenditure, or total revenue plus our total expenditures. And you can see out to the side where there's some years that we made money and some years where we lost money. But the last, since 2017, or no, actually since 2015, we've been losing money.
Yeah. So what do you want to raise it to?
Well, I was, the bad part is we, we're kind of like at the top of the scale for cemetery fees around here in this area. I mean, it's still a lot cheaper than a private cemetery. But I was hoping maybe we could just increase it like 10% and just, you know, be done with it.
Are the expenditures a result that we do better maintenance?
I think so, cause a lot of the most, the largest expense we have is the mowing. Because we hire out the mowing, because it would take days and days and days and days to mow around all those headstones. And then we also fertilize it and, you know, we baby the trees and, you know, so I mean, we do, do a lot of maintenance in the cemeteries, which makes them look nicer.
Do we clean the headstones or no? Or is that up to the families?
Yeah, it's up to the families.
Okay.
But we clean off, you know, if people leave stuff, we clean it off after a certain amount of time and, you know, we're constantly doing maintenance, constantly seeding, fertilizing, mowing, repeat.
Right, right.
Okay, I'm cool with that.
Yeah.
Okay. It won't cover exactly, you know, everything, but it'll get us more to, more where we won't have to transfer as much money.
Almost $30,000.
Yeah.
That was a big hit.
Alright. So next we're going to park fee increases. Yeah, on the park side, same thing, if we could increase the fee just to try to make some more money to, you know, for the maintenance end. And we're starting to get to that point where we start to have to replace stuff. Like I know this year, we need to replace all the, the roofs on all our structures at Sims Park. And of course, we want to replace the structure at Seven Gables. And, um, we want to do the landscaping at Camp Dennison. We want to do landscaping at Belong. So all these things require, you know, us to think long-term. And how do we generate those dollars to get that money to be able to replace the things that we love? So I was hoping that we could increase the fees, um, $50 for each of the shelters. So for, you can see right now, the, um, I think I included the, what it is now. But basically, the Lemming Shelter is a hundred dollar deposit and the fee right now is a hundred dollars. So we would increase it to 150. So it would just be 50 straight down the line. Um, and then raise the non-resident rate another 50. And then under fee to reserve park for an event, um, 250 for a deposit and 450 for the fee. And then how I got the 450 was taking all the shelters at Sims Park and adding them together. So it's basically the Lemming Shelter, the Shady Ridge and Deer Run, add it all together. It probably doesn't exactly add up, but I just rounded it off. And then, um, the daycares at HOB, I just took the HOB rental rate, the Home of the Brave, and just did the same exact rental fee. And then under, um, in there, the, under failure to clean up or any damages to the shelter, concrete base, equipment, electric, et cetera, will result in the forfeiture of the deposit as well as an additional cleanup charge or repairs by the township personnel. Um, we had an issue with one of the shelters at, I think it was at Sims Park, it was Lemming Shelter, where somebody brought in a large kettle. And then it was like wood-fed and then they heated it and then they burned the, burned the concrete pad. So we had to hire somebody to come in and fix the concrete pad. Now the person paid for it. We charged them, we kept their deposit, then we charged them an additional fee to fix it. They paid it and then they apologized, but we, you know, politely explained to them, you know, we can't have anything in the shelter that would burn it down.
Right.
So, I think we, we need to put that, yeah, in there that they cannot have.
Open flame.
So, and that's my next thing is users will not be permitted to have inflatable bounce houses, slides, et cetera, pop-up tents, livestock, kettles, private grills, or anything that may burn coals or wood.
What if they hire someone? What if they have someone come and do like a pig roast?
Um, as long as it's not, I would be okay with that as long as it's not in the shelter.
Like, yeah.
Like if they did it in the parking lot?
In a trailer.
Yeah, or a trailer or something like that, but not in the shelter.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then we're.
Pull up their little trailer.
Yeah, and we do, we, we allow people to bring trailers in like that, like food, if they want to do food trucks and stuff. But as long as they don't park it on the grass. We have so many people that come in and they park in the grass and then they, you know, they tear up the grass. So I tell them now, I'm like, you have to stay in the parking lot. And they've been pretty good about it. Except for the Lemming Shelter, because it's so far off the, the parking. A lot of them will just go right down the sidewalk and park in the back. And they've torn the grass up back there. So we just have to really try to watch that.
So you have no fire pits in there?
Yes. Oh, you know what? I better add that. I don't have fire pits.
So no bounce houses?
Uh-uh.
Yeah, um, bounce houses, we actually cannot allow because of our insurance. Yeah, and we've had a rash of that lately where people will hire an outside company. The outside company will come in and set it up and then leave. And then there's nobody there to watch it. So then we have, like, one time we had four. So, I was really concerned about our insurance.
Did you see that, I don't even think it was in this country, but some bounce house for a birthday party? That blew away. Did you see it? With the kids in it?
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, some serious injuries. Yeah.
Yeah, so our insurance company said that we pretty, pretty much have to prohibit it and we can't allow it. Now, of course, if they show up and weren't, none of us are here and we don't know about it, then obviously we can't do anything. But the ones we do know about, we can't.
That's fine.
Can't allow it. And then under the athletic fields, um, I just put in there that we, you have to reserve the fields through us. And that the teams pay a $12 per fee per player per season to help offset maintenance costs. And we don't need to up that this year. Now, the, one thing we did last year is we just did $12 for the year. And it only generated about $7,500. So this time I put in there $12 per player per season so that we get at least two.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So then we're not increasing the fee per se, but yet we're getting it twice.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And then you've got something in there that they're not allowed to resell it.
Oh, you know what? I'll put that in there. Does anybody else have any other? And then we had some, um, typos that we had to fix too, when we retyped it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Union Cemetery roads sidewalks. We are at a conundrum. We don't know what to do with sidewalks because the sidewalks partly are in Loveland and they're partly in Sims. So, I have reached out to Loveland many, many, many times to beg them pretty much to do the project. And then find out like if they can't do it this year, what year could they do it in? But their priority is downtown, which I understand. The problem becomes, we're not allowed to put our sidewalks in a city right away and we can't spend our money on it.
Right.
So the next best thing is, you know, what do we do? Do we just put in our, our sections and leave blanks? Or do we try to approach, we thought about approaching the lodge to see if maybe they would be willing to pay for their portion? Because they have two pieces that are pretty large that would help. But then there's like four more properties that aren't the lodge that we would have to approach. The only other thing I could think of to do was if, we said this to Loveland, hey, we'll pay, but then we'll give you five years to pay us back. Like if you, if it was 250,000 your portion, you know, what if you paid us back over a five-year period? Or you assess your residents, because we can't assess them because they're not our residents. But what if, you know, we paid for it and then Loveland assessed their residents and then they assessed them for a five-year period? And then we would just get the assessment. That's the only thing else I could think of.
Their assessment is, that's business, isn't it?
And, well, the lodge is a business, but then there's actually two residential pieces that are in, in there. And then one other commercial piece, because there's the, the apartments, the Carrington. And then you've got that one little garage that's next to Carrington and then that one little house, that house, the Bengal House. Yeah.
How many people live at the lodge?
I don't know.
And then the apartment building, you say?
The Carrington?
Yeah.
I don't know that either.
It's probably in the hundreds.
Yeah, it'd be nice for those people to get out and take a walk.
Well, yeah.
You know, even if they're in the wheelchair.
Right. This is, this directly benefits them. And they should all get in a series of buses and go to a Loveland Community Council meeting.
Or that guy that was here at our meeting, like I know, like Columbia Township fed him money and then for like Silver Spring, not Silver Spring House, because that's us, but 50 West.
50 West.
Can we do something like that? How they did it?
They did it to a private business through the CIC.
So that's a loan. So somebody paid for that.
Yeah. Well, Columbia Township provided it with their AR, with their CARES Act money.
They gave them enough, like a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
50 West. And didn't they put in an ice skating rink? Everything I want to do. Like he copied off of me because we had lunch and then all of a sudden they had an ice rink. And I was talking about that ice rink at lunch. I gas.
But yeah, I mean, that's a lot of voters.
Well, Jeff, he said, cause I, cause Jeff's the one that keeps bugging me about it. And I told him, I said, you're gonna have to convince Loveland. They just, you know, their priority is downtown. They're not, you know, they're, this is just on the outskirts for them, so their, their priority is gonna be somewhere else. Um, see if you can get them, but he said he's gone to meetings and they just, they just don't, you know. It's not a priority for them, yeah.
I'm just saying, if, if, if the lodge were to.
Oh, attend a meeting?
Attend a Loveland City Council meeting, like en masse. Or maybe a few meetings, they might get the message.
Okay, yeah, but probably after COVID. This one, probably gonna begin now.
Well, they could attend virtually. That'd be even easier.
Well, are you allowed to attend virtually?
Well, no, you're right. I didn't realize I'd not been re-upped.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't know, it's, and that begs the question, do we wanna hold it off until we figure it out? Till we can make it up and make it work?
They petition the council.
There you go. That's a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
You tell Jeff to do that.
And then maybe he, cause he said he would talk to the people at Carrington. And then we were hoping to get a contact from Harold from the lodge to see if.
I mean, you'd think that the lodge would be all in on this. It definitely helps their residents.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
So, back to your question, should we do our part? And then just continue working on the, the missing part with Loveland? Or do we just put it on hold?
I think we should, at least short-term, put it on hold until we can see if we can figure that out. Okay. Maybe long-term not, but short-term, yeah.
Cause the ends are the easy part. So, well, no, never mind. The, the one end is, if you do in front, like where the Russian zone, the three big houses, like if you connect those to where the sidewalk already ends near Shenandoah, that, that would be the easy part. Um, the other easy part is like from our property in the corner there to the corp line, like to where Carrington is, that would be an easy part, because it's all us. It just is where the lodge is and then that piece, where the care facility is and where Carrington is, is the other missing, missing piece.
I think we should give it some time and see if it works out. If not.
What's the cost for our part?
Our part's about 170 and their part's about 270.
And what'd you say about those three houses?
There's, well, you got Anthony's Furniture, like where their, their back entrance comes out. And then you've got the lodge, so that's that part down by Speedway.
Yep.
And then we've got one, we've got our parcel plus four houses. So that's where the corp line end or begins. So there is the care facility driveway that goes back. And so then you've got that facility and then you've got all those apartments that are back here that are half in Loveland and half in Sims. And then you've got those two other pieces that are right in front of that.
Okay.
So it's like a little block building. I don't know if it's a car repair place or what it is. And then you've got that house that's next to it.
Fingers up printer.
Ah, that's it, because somebody said that, um, you guys used to use them to get your printing done.
And they always put, let me put signs up.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I got the cost estimate in the back though.
Okay.
Okay. So it's 167, 853 for us and then 263, 098 for the city. So for a total of 439, 51.
Okay. Yeah.
I hate to, I hate to just put our section in and leave big holes, you know? Cause it's gonna look, I mean, it's not gonna be usable. I'd rather make it usable.
Right.
I didn't know if there's any way you guys could talk to your counterparts in Loveland and maybe.
I think the petition's gonna work.
Okay.
That might help. I mean, if it is a significant petition.
Okay. We'll try that.
Might get their attention.
Okay, Camp Dennison landscape plan.
I've talked to Barb a couple of times today. She's very happy with the landscape plan.
That's good. So we got, Jackie got her to a point where she was happy with this plan. Um, but then she had sent me, she, when she came in to talk to me about it, she said that she would also like, you know, obviously the larger Sims sign with, you know, Camp Dennison underneath it, like Sims Township. And then Camp Dennison somewhere on the property. And then I guess there's a sign on the north side of the triangle that needs repairs done to the plexiglass. Um, there's repairs that need to be done to the cannon. I guess the concrete base has cracks and the cannon needs to be repainted. Um, she wants to move and repair the Morgan's Raider sign and then, um, And then obviously she wanted the path and the new landscaping. And then she sent another email just the other day, because I guess she, I had, I didn't know if she had taken this to the civic league. So I had forwarded to Mike Howe. But he was not able to attend the meeting, but I guess Barb had gone to the meeting. And then she said they would like to add to the design a few more flagstones by the cannon. That seems appropriate to a landscape designer and it gives a landing to stand on. I also have a bit of concern about the watering of all the new plantings until they are established. Do we have a plan for this? Bill suggested that whoever we hire to do it, we just hire them to maintain it for a few years after they install it. And that way they're responsible for maintaining it and watering it and we don't have to worry about that. Because it would probably add another two to three hours for us to do that every couple of days.
And like, do we hire someone to repair the cracks in the cannon or can we just do that in-house?
We would, I don't know. I don't know if Bobby could do it. I could ask him because Bobby has experience with concrete, but I don't know if he could do the repairs or not. But then it begs the question, who, who put that stuff there and who maintains it now? Like we don't, I mean, it's probably.
It's probably not maintained at all.
Well, yeah, but I just didn't know who put it there originally.
I have no idea.
Okay. The question of the road being abandoned was brought up again. I talked to ODOT today and I had a conversation with Tom Maza, who is our bridge guy. He gave me another lady's name. She, I left it back at my desk. But anyway, I told him pretty much what they're looking for. So he said they could do a preliminary analysis of it and what they're concerned about is the road skew. So when you come down 126, the way the road comes out, he's going to check to see if you can actually physically pull a car out and go right. And pull, and then pull a large truck out and go right. Because Bill said you literally would have to go into the next lane to be able to turn right because of the way the road is skewed. So he's going to do that preliminary analysis for us and see if it's worth pursuing.
I know most, at least when I was down there with them, most of the cars don't go that way. They do go the right hand.
Oh, okay, they pull out?
Take a right.
Instead of going left?
Left, yeah. Because they say the site, they can't, they like have to.
Oh, yeah, because you have to turn all the way around?
Yeah, so they just go out and then turn right.
Okay.
But we're talking, if I understand correctly, we're talking about making that like a T intersection. Is that right? We're getting rid of the island per se?
Right, because right now Cougar Mill comes east-west and 126 does this. It comes, but it comes down, wait, comes down like this and then comes down like this, which leaves that little triangle.
Right.
So this is the part, the part that goes north-south is the one they want to get rid of. And they want to increase the size of the triangle. So, and that's part, it's all part of ODOT's limited access. So we would have to ask their permission to be able to get rid of it and just keep the part that goes east-west. And like Jody said, she said there's people that do that already because they said it's better sight distance.
So how, if that were approved.
Put a little piece off the curve, the triangle to make it easier if you take a right? Shave a little part so it.
Oh, and then pave it so that it does that? I don't know. We'd have to get ODOT's permission to do that too.
Yeah.
Can I take your sketch?
Yeah.
Does this show up on?
No, but it, well, yeah, it does. It's this piece right here that they're talking about. So they're talking about getting rid of that piece and then just keeping this. Yeah, but see how it, this is 126. So this is Cougar Mill touching it and Cougar Mill touching it right there.
So don't you, clearly, don't you want like this to be right angle as much as possible?
Well, sure. But then you're going to go right. Okay.
Yeah, they just did that, didn't they?
Yeah.
It looks nice too.
Yeah, it looks nice.
I'm going to have to go down and look at it.
And I think they achieved that 90-degree angle. I think it's safe. I just wondered, I mean, if that sort of rework of the roads is possible. Then we should take that into consideration for landscape, if we might be doing stuff and then take part of that.
Yeah, but you're going to always reallocate the plants. I mean, we can dig plants up.
Yeah.
It'd just be nice to get maybe word from ODOT. Would you even consider this or is this?
And that's what I was asking them, is this something that's even feasible? Like, do we even, do we even have a chance of getting it, you know, whatever paperwork we have to fill out? So that's why he told me he would do a preliminary analysis of it first to even see if it would be something that they would entertain. And if it is, there's, there's studies that they have to do apparently, so.
Even if we explain, maybe we could pay for the right-hand turn not to go into the other lane.
Yeah, I can bring that up again. All right.
And I do know that when I talked to Barb on the phone. It's not, I don't remember who she told me. Someone's having a walk-through Camp Dennison.
Oh, Miami Township.
Miami Township. And so she wants to make sure it's not during the time that that area is being, so we either, it's in April, so it either has to be done before April or after that date in April.
Okay.
Okay.
That's her next question is wondering about the implementation. I didn't do, I didn't put anything like this in our budget because we, we've got the Mead House going on and then we've got the play structure at Seven Gables that we're still trying to figure out how to pay for. So I didn't want to over, over-indulge us because we still have those shelters roofs that we've got to replace and we've got a lot of maintenance stuff that we're needing to get done. So I didn't know when you guys thought about doing this.
How much is this costing us?
I don't know. See, that's the next thing we have to do is get a cost estimate.
Yeah, I guess we need to find out if Camp Dennison would be interested in redoing that road geometry. And if they are, and if ODOT is willing to consider it. Because that could change that whole Cannon Park. I don't know if you saw when I was holding that up, but.
I understand what you're saying.
I don't think they would like that just because the reason they wanted that southbound lane to go away is because they want to increase the size of the triangle. And if you come right through the middle of it, you're going to cut it in half. I, I don't disagree with what you're saying because I like right angles too. But I think in their minds, they want that southbound stuff so they can have bigger green space.
For sure.
Okay.
The little libraries thing, I don't really know. That's just you leave a book, take a book, right?
Yeah. Actually, I was going to put some videos. I have all these Disney videos.
I spoke to Melissa again about OD, from ODNR about the removal of the stump and the two problem trees. She said they have until April to remove them according to the federal law protecting bats. Once they have been removed, we would be able to do some planting of trees along Sims Township line on the bike trail to finish off the tree line. Are you guys interested in us doing that? Or I don't know how that works. I guess we would have to give money to ODOT to do it or ODNR to do it?
Yeah, and how, how many trees?
I have no idea.
I mean, I guess we have need to find out the cost. Were we talking 500 or were we talking 20,000?
What's this for? I'm sorry. I'm kind of lost.
She wanted to put more trees along the bike path in the Sims Township portion.
Oh, oh, right, okay. Where they were cut down?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, right. I'm with you. Yeah, that was bad.
It'd be nice, yeah, for them. Mo, I feel like for Camp Dennison, we spent a lot of money on our parks and we really haven't done much in Camp Dennison over the years. So I'm excited that there's a new civic league that wants to do stuff. And that, I mean, it's a cool area now, but they, I think they really want to make it like really cool. And I think it's kind of, would be good for us to do that because we do so much up here.
Right.
We don't do much down there.
Okay. The Home Depot buckets, I don't know anything.
Oh, okay, so, yes, I'm glad you bring this up because I keep forgetting. Okay, so next to Barb's house, there's a church and they have a parking lot. And they, I guess they get people who go on the bike trail and just park their cars in their parking lot. So they've taken Home Depot buckets and they put concrete in. So they use this chain link.
Oh.
I talked to Bill about this a while ago, so I think it's probably against our zoning.
That's what I'm thinking. We probably need to send Emily down there to.
Get rid of it.
Okay.
But then how do you prevent, I mean, they'd just have to sign no parking there?
Yeah.
Yeah, they would have to put a.
Somebody will, you know, be towed. And then you give a number. Or I'm sure there is some sort of chain link that could be appropriate down there. I don't know.
Maybe they could do parking meters. That could get some revenue.
There you go. Except on Sundays.
Right.
Okay. I think that's it. And then, and then who, who, do you know who at the engineer's office I have to talk to about getting approval to do any of this work since it's not our property?
You mean at ODOT?
No, at Hamilton County Engineer's Office, I was told, is the one that handles this triangle because it's right of way.
I thought that was ODOT because of the right of way.
No, this is, this piece is Hamilton, owned by Hamilton County Commissioners. So from what I was told, the Hamilton County Engineer's Office is the one that we would need to get approval from. I didn't know if there was a specific person.
I guess I'd start with Eric and ask him.
Okay.
No, I didn't realize that. I assumed that was all state right of way.
I just want to make sure we had a good plan first before I go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Okay, is there anything?
All we're doing is making improvements to what's existed.
Right.
Yeah.
But are you guys okay with what they want to do?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to add?
Buy small plants.
Okay. Yeah, I think she's got.
Legria, sloth.
Sea green junipers, feather reed grass, a flagstone path, black-eyed Susans, ewes.
It'd be pretty.
Dogwoods, big blue lily turf and feather red grass. So all these things are drought resistant. So they should be, you know, if we keep up with them for a couple of years, they should be good on their own.
We should be able to put those in our meetings down like I'm a root.
Yes. But she's working on that, by the way.
What was the thing you mentioned about the plexiglass?
There's like a sign on the north end that, you know the sign that's in front of our building? That's that tall white sign that's the, I think the second sign that used to be next to that one is down in Camp Dennison.
At the Cannon Park?
Yes. And it's like, it's like a plexiglass on the front of it. So she wanted if we could fix that somehow. So I guess we'd have to have a sign company come in and look.
Okay.
To see how we could make repairs to that.
Okay.
And then we'd have to get a cost estimate on putting up one of those big signs. But it's, I know, I mean, I know what we paid at Mead and it's like about $5,000 to put up one of those signs. But I guess we'd have to ask the county if we can put it there. Okay. Mead House renovations.
Well, if that's county property, I wonder if, tell them, hey, we'll split, we're going to make improvements on your property. We'll split the cost with you.
I don't think they'll have an issue with it. It's just, they probably won't pay for any of it, but.
Yeah, if we're doing the legwork, see if they'll help, help pay for it.
We probably need with the county engineer to see if we have any projects too this year with them. Do we need any projects done?
Oh, yeah, we always need a project.
So let's get them on the phone.
All right.
See if we can meet with Eric or his rep.
Okay. Under the Mead House, I did ask Teresa if, if there was any way to make that floor plan bigger on the bottom floor. And she said there's really no way to make that bigger unless we took out the frame. Like took out the door frame next to the two restrooms to open up that hallway, but that's really the, and to me, I just didn't know if that would be worth it. Because I know what you're trying to do is get more meeting space.
Yeah, like.
But the only thing that we could do is remove, like remove this wall and this wall. And then this wall here to open these rooms up. To get them to connect.
But we can't open.
But we wouldn't be able to open all this up.
But we can't like get rid of this wall and this wall, these walls? Just, so when you walk in, it's one, you can't get rid of those walls?
I think she said they were load, the.
They couldn't move the load?
Yeah, because they're load-bearing walls, so we couldn't get rid of them.
So you can't move, like some places you can change the load-bearing wall.
Yeah, the, here, these are load-bearing. We have to bring in a beam on these, but she said we couldn't do both.
Okay, so as long as it's as open as possible.
Yeah, I think she's probably got it as open as it's going to be. She said really the only thing to do in the upper part is to make that bathroom smaller.
I don't care.
But I mean, that, the upper part is not really a concern.
I just care about.
It's more about the bottom.
Yeah.
So if you guys are okay with that, I'll tell her that it's okay. And I sent back as many as the blanks that I could with the existing property report. There's existing conditions. So we'll get that going so she can finish that.
As many blanks, what'd you say? You sent back as many blanks as possible?
She had areas in the existing conditions report, stuff that she couldn't fill out, like she didn't know the dates and like, you know, what was the made of, is it galvanized steel, is it copper? And Dave told me it was copper lines in there.
Okay.
Things like where the stormwater came out. I didn't know there was a ditch next to the parking lot that where all the lines drain and that's where the water goes. Something like when the front porch was put on, when the back porch was put on. But between me, Dave, Bill, Dave Zbrink, we were able to answer all those.
Okay.
So then the last thing is the personnel manual changes. The service department has asked that we change some of the personnel policy manual. So that we're looking at, under compensation for compensatory time and overtime. They would like to see that we go up to the 80-hour accumulation, but it won't, but it wouldn't be refillable. So what Bill and them are proposing is that we go up to 80, but only, they would only be allowed to use 40 total. So five comp days over the whole year and then the other five they could be paid out for at the, you know, like in December, like we normally do it. And then.
I remember when we changed it the last time, it caused a lot of problem because people were taking off too much.
Well, that, that's what would eliminate this. So what the last, the problem was last time is it said it could exceed, it could not exceed 60 hours, but then it was refillable. So it was constantly being used, filled, used, filled, used, filled. For this, it would just be a total of 80. You can't go over 80. It's not refillable. So you can only use five total. So then if you still have five left, you get paid out that five in December.
So how many weeks of vacation time do they get?
Most of them get four and a good part of them get five.
So we, they have four and five and then they're getting 80 on top of that.
Right. But they'd only be able to use five days. That would be another 40, another week. Yep, so it wouldn't be the refill. It would, it would just be a straight five days. That's it.
So if, okay.
Which would be better than the way we do it now.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to. Okay, yeah, I'm trying to understand it. So why wouldn't you just max it out at five and then just pay them overtime? You could do it that way because isn't that what's happening at the end of the year? They're getting overtime?
They're getting their, yeah, they, I think they like getting the comp payout in December at Christmas.
Also, they're using it as their Christmas bonus. Does that affect our budget?
Uh, no, because we always budget for it. But I'm okay with them reducing it down to five days because it really helps, helps the schedule. Before, like I said, they were filling it and using it, filling it and using it.
I know.
It was a constant, constant thing that we were having to deal with. So actually saying you only get five days, period, and we'll pay you out the other five, it really would help eliminate a lot of that.
So the max they can have is 10.
10 days, right.
Max.
Max.
And this comp time is in, it's in lieu of being paid?
Right, overtime, yep.
So, we're paying them straight time?
No. Well, they're getting overtime and comp time, so if they work two hours, they actually get three hours of comp time. Because it's two times 1.5, which is three. So they would get that three hours instead of the two hours that they worked. So they either work it and get three, or they get paid for three.
I see, okay.
But I'm okay with that. I mean, it, it'll help reduce, you know, some of the time, because I think everybody wants to take off Friday. So it makes it kind of hard when everybody in the whole department wants off on Friday and we don't, we, I mean, we just can't physically do that.
Right. And what about the Saturdays? Is that still an issue?
Um, no, we just, what we've gone to it is a signed schedule. And it just kind of rotates. Um, I think Bill takes into consideration like who's on what, you know, if they're, if this person's on vacation this week and it falls on that person's week, then he does his best to try to, you know, rework it so that it works out, that everybody gets the same amount of days. So then on paid holidays, I added the Juneteenth in there. And then, under, let's see, vacation? Oh, this is the, this is the part where I don't agree with them and they don't agree with me. So under vacation, right now, it's not written this way, but I don't allow more than two people to take off at one time just because we just don't have enough people to let everybody off. So, if there's nine of them, so if two people are off, that means seven people are on. They don't agree with me on that. They think that they should be able to, that Willie and Dave shouldn't count in that equation. So then you're down to, if you take Bill, Dave and Willie out of the equation, then you're down to seven people, which means if two people can be off, then you're down to five people. So to me, in my opinion, five people's not enough to do anything, especially if you got parks and roads that you're trying to do at the same time. I just don't, I just would like to stick to the two. But it's ultimately your decision, like what you guys feel.
What do we have now? What's that, what do we have now?
I, I do it so that no more than two people could take off at the same time unless there's a holiday and then we let three people off at the holidays.
And there's, we have no written policy about it?
Nope.
Yeah, let's just make that a written policy, if it works.
I think it works, they don't like it though.
Sometimes it's a give and take.
That's kind of the way I look at it too, but that's why I was letting them do three at the holidays. But the problem is, is you can't, you can't give everybody off at the holidays either. I mean, somebody's got to work.
Right.
I mean, that would be like me and Luanne taking off and leaving the office by itself. I mean, it's, you just can't do that. Yeah, I know, but still, you know, we try not to do that, you know, when you don't, when you don't have to, but unless it's not, you know.
Okay.
But I think a lot of the problem too was, I asked Bill to, this time when he sent the book around, instead of letting everybody pick a week and then pick days after this, this seems to be the issue too, is that everybody picks a week and then everybody else wants to pick days. So if you have four weeks of vacation, you pick a week and then you've got these 15 days that everybody wants to use and of course, everybody wants a Friday. So then it becomes this mad dash to get the Friday off. So, that's why I asked Bill this time to send it around and make everybody pick two weeks of vacation, like one week and another week, and then only have the 10 days and see if maybe it works that way. See if it becomes more, you know, plausible to let that happen. You know, because it's not a large department and we can't just let lots and lots of people off.
Right.
I don't know, what do you guys think?
That makes sense. Yeah.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, they need to understand. But here's, quick question. So, if there's, they say they're down to five people on a Friday. I mean, what do they need to get done on Friday to prepare for the weekend? But they can't get done on Thursday? Or Wednesday, or Tuesday, or Monday?
Mainly it's just clean, the cleaning, because if you don't clean those shelters and empty that trash before you leave on Friday, they are a total disaster by Saturday.
So that, that doesn't take five people, because I see them driving around on their gators with one.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know. I mean, is there something magical about a Friday that has to, stuff has to get done on Friday? Or could it get done on Thursday?
I mean, it could. Yeah, it could. I just don't, how many people do you think is okay to let off though?
I don't know, that's, I don't know.
I don't know what that number is. I mean, really to be safe, you really should be have, you should really have four people together in a group when you're working on a project, especially if you're on the roads. And if you're in the summer, if you only have, you know, May through October to get stuff done, they, they really are not getting done the number of catch basins that we normally get done, just because everybody wants a Friday off.
Okay, I get that too.
And so you got to have so many people working on the, the catch basin, then you got so many people flagging and so many people doing this or that, so it, I don't know. I just don't want them to get down to the point where they only have two people and it's not safe.
Right.
Right. If you have five people, four there and one in the park, I, whatever you want to do is fine with me, but I'm just, I'm just throwing those things out there.
Well, I just don't want to make it unfair. I don't want to make it unfair at the same time, but...
I get it, I get it, I get it.
You know, we are here to provide a service and I just, you know, we got to get the work done.
Right.
Yeah.
I totally understand.
All right, um, sick leave. We have a policy now where it says that the township administrator may require reasonable evidence to support a claim for sick leave and in May, in case of an absence of more than three consecutive days, require a doctor's certificate. So, we were having an issue with sick leave, so I started making everybody bring in a sick note.
On Friday?
Well, that's when the problem started, because if you couldn't get a vacation day, people were calling in sick, so, um...
I can see that.
So then, I started making them bring in sick leave doctors' notes and the sick leave went way down, so, um, they don't like that. So, they were wondering if I would let up and not just after one day, require a sick note, but they, we were thinking, okay, maybe after, let's see, if it's in more than three consecutive working days, or if they have four occurrences during the course of a calendar year. So, if they took time off, or if they took a sick day, say they took one day off, we wouldn't require a sick note until they got up to day five. Like if they did it four times in the year and then once they got up to the fifth occurrence, then they would need a sick note.
Yeah, like the county, if you're sick three days, you have to provide a note.
And that's what our code, that's what our thing says now.
Yeah. That's fine.
What do you guys do with the county? You said just anything more than three days, but there's nothing in there about occurrences? Okay.
No, but I would say, at least in my department, we are sick time abusers. Not me, but we are sick time abusers, big time. It's like almost embarrassing.
So I don't want to get to that point, because then, then too, if people are calling in sick and you've already got two people off, then you got more people that are not there.
Right.
Right.
And you can't, you can't, I mean, you can't plan for that. And some people do get sick, I'm not saying they don't, and some people have kids that get sick and, you know, then you got to deal with your kids.
Right.
I'm just trying to be reasonable, but at the same time, we did, we did have a major problem, because there was one year, I think we had like 1,200 hours of sick leave that we, between all of this.
You're probably going to have this year too, because of those.
Yeah, let's see. In 2018, we had 798 hours. In 2019, we had 798.5 hours. In 2020, we had 1,211. And then in 2021, we had around 737.
However you want to handle it.
Okay.
I, I kind of like bringing in a note from the doctor personally, but...
Well, I do too, I mean, especially if you have, especially if you have like...
Might be much.
Say you went to the dentist, or you went for a doctor's appointment, you know, you're going to get, you're there anyway, so just get a sick note, I mean...
Yeah, but like take me for example, I, I have migraines.
Okay.
I worked through my migraines, I go to work. But if I felt like I would need to stay home, there would be absolutely no reason for me to go to a doctor.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
So I get that. All right. I think I know how to do it.
If, if you're legitimately sick, then we don't really want you coming in and getting sick.
Right, yeah, true.
But it's the abuse of it, that's what we're trying to stop.
Right. Another issue we had is the funeral leave. It seems like we have a lot of, and I don't know how to handle this. We have a lot, you know, if somebody dies and then they've been delaying the funeral. But then we've also had issues where we've had, you know, like we've had cremations and then they'll wait like months to do something with the ashes and then they take time off because they get that three days, even though they're really not doing, really, they didn't have a funeral. So it's like, almost like, well, why do you need the three days if you're just taking somebody's ashes somewhere? I don't, I don't know. I guess I just don't understand. But I didn't know how you guys felt about that.
I don't either.
Is a three days excessive?
Well, I think it is, if you, I mean...
Don't you have to take, you take sick time, right? Is sick time?
No, it's just free paid, paid time off for funeral.
No.
That, that's the way, I'm used to it. I'm used to, if you take funeral leave, it's your sick leave.
Right.
But this policy, it allows up to three days off, no ma, no questions asked.
No, county, we have to take sick time. And if, if we're past, if it's not like an immediate member of the family, like a mother, son, whatever, you have to take vacation.
Right.
So if it's like your aunt, you have to take vacation.
But I didn't know how you felt about, like, it, should it have to be at the time, you know, around the time of, of death?
Immediate, it would be like a wife or a husband or a mother?
Yeah, we do have that in there. We say immediate family is to find as mother, father, brother, sister, child, spouse, grandparent, grandchild, mother-in-law, father-in-law, daughter-in-law, son-in-law, sister-in-law, brother-in-law, legal guardian, or other place, or other person who stands in place of the employee's parent, loco parentis, or other relative residing in the same household as the employee. But I guess what I'm asking too is like, do we care? Like say the person dies in May, but you don't dispose of their ashes until August and then you take all your funeral leave in August?
I don't know, I think we should get rid of that.
And you go on vacation?
Get rid of it.
And you go on vacation to get rid of ashes?
No, I think we should just get rid of it.
Just make it sick leave.
Yeah.
Yeah, just get rid of it.
Okay.
It's too, I don't know, it's just not, it's just not a thing anymore.
I know, that's the kind of the way I look at it too, is why do you need three days off?
Is there any other township that does that?
Um, let's see, Butler Township used to do it and then we reined it in because it was like, they included every family member of the whole family tree. And then you'd have all these, like we had this one employee, who would always say, oh, my cousin died, oh, my aunt died, oh, my aunt on my dad's side died, and then my cousin three removed died. And they, each time, they get three days off. So it was like, okay, we're going to rein that in.
Yeah, I think we should get rid of that.
But every county place and city place I've ever worked, it's always sick time.
Yeah.
That you got to burn your sick time.
I think we should get rid of that.
Okay. And then the last thing is, we probably need something in our, um, Family Medical Leave Act that begins when FMLA starts. Um, most places, it's like if you've been gone for three to five days, FMLA automatically kicks in. Ours doesn't say anything about that. Ours just says you get up to 20, you get up to 12 weeks off, but it really doesn't say, you know, and what I'm afraid of is that you get your 12, you know, you get your time of injury or whatever it is, so you're, say you're off for 12 weeks with a shoulder injury and then...
Which is all sick time.
Right.
Or vacation time.
Right.
Yeah.
And then something else happens and you don't have any more time left, so you get another 12 weeks, because we never told you when your FMLA had to start. That's what I'm saying, it needs to be one and the same, it needs a lineup.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Five days in FMLA.
Is, I don't even know what the county is.
It's probably three days if I had to guess.
I would think it's...
Because most places, if you're gone more than three days, they automatically put you on FMLA.
Yep.
Is it worth a call to Human Resources, the county? Just to verify that?
Oh yeah, who, who does your HR down there?
Well, Frank Spataro is the director.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I had. Oh, uniform and shoes. So, Bill has asked that we increase, uh, the cost of safety shoes. I guess right now, we do $150.
A year?
Yeah, for shoes for the guys. And he's asking if we could increase that to 175, so, I mean, I guess a lot of the boots are, you know, going up in cost and, so right now, like if you go and buy a $175 pair of boots, we would pay the 150 and they would pay the $25 extra.
So, we buy them a new pair of shoes every year?
Whether they need it or not.
I have shoes that are 20 years old. I know they probably wear them every day, but...
Ken has, you know, he's the fireman and he wears his shoes for two years.
So does Ben, yeah.
So you want to make it 175 every two years?
That'd be, okay, I'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, every year?
And just sort of...
You made that decision on me.
Just emphasize...
I'm not taking the blame for that one.
I mean, the boots normally don't wear out.
It's, but you can have them resold.
Right.
If Ben does that with his, he just gets his resold.
Absolutely.